This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, May 3rd. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
And the absent has an excused absence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as has been presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
What's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have the consent items. City Clerk Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of April 19th, special city council minutes of April 26th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of April 26th, planning commission minutes of April 21st, park and recreation board minutes on March 17th, accounts payable report from April 15 through April 28, labor committee minutes of April 13, public work safety committee minutes of April 22nd, a resolution for tree planting maintenance policy amendment, a resolution ordering assessment hearing for 2021 street improvement projects, finance committee minutes of April 22nd, a resolution for the 2020 general fund department overages, resolution for the 2020 pre-audit fund balances, a resolution for the purchase of 2021 Tahoe police package vehicle with emergency equipment, for council's acceptance, the Wilmer Convention and Visitor Bureau minutes of March 16th, police commission minutes of March 31st, and for council's information, the Wilmer Main Street minutes of April 20th.
I would like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D, the planning commission minutes.
Okay, we'll pull item D. Councilmember Osmus.
I would like to pull H, Public Works, Public Safety, from April 22nd.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I would like to pull item J.
Item J, okay.
Make a motion.
So with the exception of D, H, and J, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made by councilmember Fagerly, seconded by councilmember Osmus to approve the other items with the exception of D, H, and J. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. That resolution passes. Councilmember Fagerly, item number D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In question is item four, the downtown land sale. I see we have our Director of Community Development here. If he could just explain what's going on there. I know it's down further in the agenda on 14, but just give an overview of what's happening there because I went to the planning commission, so.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, you just want a general overview, councilmember? The land sale for Block 25, which is the west half of Block 25, went to the planning commission on the 21st, excuse me, on April 7th, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, April 21st, and there was some robust discussion between Commissioner Frank and others that centered on the parking in downtown and the importance of parking. It ended up being a 5-1 vote in favor of proposing the land sale.
But for them to buy the city's property, they do have to buy the other two properties to the east then.
That's correct.
They're already in negotiation.
That's correct. That's why we had to bring it so early. They have since developed a design, but in order for the project to work, they need the entire block, but they need to know that they have the city half first before they invest the money in the other half.
Okay. That's all I needed. I'll move to file those minutes.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Fagerly, seconded by councilmember Davis to approve the minutes of the planning commission from April 21st. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Abstain.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
That motion passes as well. Next, we have the public work safety committee minutes. Councilmember Nelson, councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a small correction. On the minutes, it said that Andrew Plowman was present at the last minute. He had an emergency and could not make it, so he was not present at the meeting.
Okay. Staff, can you make that correction, please?
And I will make a motion to file those minutes.
Second.
Motion by Osmus, seconded by Fagerly to approve the public work safety minutes of April 22nd. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have item number J. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just seeking clarification, I'm supportive of moving forward, but I think it talked about that the city's insurance carrier had completed reviews and has filed for restitution from the suspect's insurance company. I'm just curious if what happens if there isn't restitution since this.
No. What was the question?
On the squad car, they've filed, they're saying they're filing for restitution from the other carrier. What happens if there isn't restitution? Because it's not in our budget, and I'm just wondering what kind of, if it's a deductible for us, or what happens?
Correct. We would maintain our standard deductible in any accident that would occur. We just wouldn't receive restitution. If we do, that's a plus on our part.
Okay. But it indicates we'll be just taking it out of our budget, or will we take it out of our reserve?
We'll be taking it out of our reserves in our budget. You know, it'll be out of the budget, and ultimately, at the end of their year, you'll decide if there are any reserves. So if any restitution comes back, it could come back in piecemeal, small amounts. It could drag on for a while. So I would not anticipate that one check would come for the whole squad car in a restitution case like this. It could take years to get it back, but we have to file the paperwork in order for it to be initiated, and that's what, you know, that's what we've done, and then we'll see if we'll get it.
I was referring to the cash that we hold for our deductibles, if we were going to fund it out of there or use the budget.
I would defer that to the Finance Director at this point in time. I'm not, all I know is that, you know, it will be acquired, and it will come out of the appropriate fund, and if that happens to be for the deductible fund, that's where it'll come out of.
Councilmember Nelson, if you're okay. Mr. Okins is on, is present, so Mr. Okins, our Finance Director, if you want to address it to him, or I can address it to him, however you wish.
If he's willing to answer it, that's fine. Councilmember Osmus, have any questions?
Finish this first.
Okay. That's fine. You can ask him.
Finance Director Okins, we have a question here on the purchase of that Tahoe police package. Would that come out of the insurance deductible, which we have? Go ahead.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, the insurance deductible, we do budget for one deductible each year out of the operating budget, so that would first be applied, and then if that was expired, as Mr. Grammets said, we would go to the reserve after that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
This isn't part of these minutes, but we are talking about squad cars. And Chief Felton, I understand we had another incident where, what, three squad cars were damaged? Four squad cars were damaged. Are we running out of squad cars?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. Unfortunately, we did have four squad cars that were involved in the latest incident where individual random. One is not usable at this moment. Right now, that's being put on the priority list to be repaired. The other three are mainly cosmetic damage, so you may see them driving around with some scratches on and that type of thing, but that's being worked on right now with the insurance company and with that person's insurance company to try and get those fixed as fast as possible, too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the purchase of the 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe police package vehicle.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Osmus to approve the resolution to replace the 2021 Tahoe police package vehicle with emergency equipment. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a public hearing amending ordinance number 1060 zoning sections 3.3 relating to driveway standards. The call-in number is 320-335-7135, and you must dial the area code when you make that phone call. I will now open the public hearing. Dr. Ramstead.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you know, we do have a planning intern, and this is specific to his work, so if you don't mind, I'd like to defer to him.
Okay. Alex?
Thank you, Dr. Ramstead. I'm calling in remotely. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, on April 7th, 2021, Planning Commission held a public hearing and approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance to update driveway access standards. A need for set driveway standards has come up by both staff and during Planning Commission's review of projects. Setting these zoning ordinance standards for driveway accesses in Wilmer will allow for equitable treatment of all property owners that come forward with driveway access requests. We are asking for, staff are seeking two motions this evening. First, to adopt the ordinance amending Wilmer Ordinance 1060, known as Wilmer Zoning Ordinance, by amending section 3F relating to driveway access standards, assigning a number and publish it. And second, to adopt a resolution authorizing the publication of the ordinance amending the driveway standards in Ordinance 1060 by summary. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Are there any additional comments from staff?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing and hearing none. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Do we have anybody that has called in?
Mr. Mayor, there are no callers at this time.
With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve amending ordinance 1060 zoning sections 3.3 relating to the driveway standards.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Fagerly, seconded by councilmember Osmus to approve amending ordinance 1060 zoning section 3.3 relating to driveway standards. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we would look for a resolution to publish the ordinance by summary.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to publish the ordinance by summary. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
They have a member of the public saying they're trying to call in and can't. Do we notice our technology work?
I cannot guarantee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we accessed it out of our call-in studio, and it is operating. There's no callers at this time.
And we have no caller.
Okay. So we have a motion that has been seconded to publish the ordinance by summary. Did we have a roll call?
Yes.
And that resolution passes as well. Next, we have consideration of interview process for virtual city administrator interviews on May 4th. Mr. Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, the, there seem to be some questions on how the virtual interviews will be conducted, who will be asking questions, and things of that nature for tomorrow's finalist interviews that are done over the virtual format, and this was placed on the agenda for the city council to decide how that process would play out, and hopefully Patty Hemmenover is logged in and can give any background information on this particular item. But I believe it is just for simplicity or clarifying how many people are going to be asking questions. The original, I think the original intent would be as if it was in person. Everybody would take their question in order, and that might get a little long when you go virtual because of the pauses in between questions. So in order to maximize the number of questions and reduce the number of pauses in between individual people, it might be beneficial to have a moderator ask the question, or limit it to, you know, a couple of people as compared to everybody taking their turn. Because I've seen this happen, and it does, instead of asking 12 questions, you end up asking nine questions, and I don't want to short the city council the ability to ask as many questions and get answers as they possibly can. So this is on the agenda for the city council to look at that particular issue and make a decision, you know, for tomorrow, how they want to operate.
Okay, council, what are your wishes?
I'd make a motion to use a moderator that is not one of us to ask the questions. I think that gives us all the same opportunities to be reviewing and answering.
There's a motion on the table to use a moderator, not one of the elected representatives. Is there seconded motion? Motion's been seconded. This was made by councilmember Nelson, seconded by councilmember Butterfield. Discussion. Okay, I'm looking around. I'm seeing hands moving, and so I need to know the people. I mean, councilmember Fagerly.
I agree with the motion because some of our internet connections aren't that well or good, so I agree with that. Just wondering, is there a name for a moderator then? Can we find someone short notice?
I think if this motion passes, I think then we'll go to that piece.
Okay.
Unless you wanted that in your motion, if you had somebody that you hadn't selected.
No, I had asked Administrator Grammets if he had a suggestion, and so I would defer to him to find someone non-partial.
I would think that the most impartial person that could probably do it would be Ms. Hemmenover, being she's in charge of the recruitment effort, and she knows the questions, and she can consistently ask the same question after, you know, to each individual person. And I would think that would be appropriate, but I don't know that I've had that discussion with him, with Ms. Hemmenover yet.
Do you want to add that to your motion, or do you want that as an amendment? I mean, it's paramount to the question, so.
I can make that amendment to request her, so.
Councilmember Butterfield, are you amicable to the amendment?
Yeah.
So I don't think that this, where's her legal person? I don't think this is paramount to the question to where we would have to have a vote on that friendly amendment. Mr. Scott, would we?
Mayor, members of the council, I agree that this friendly amendment is just fine without voting formally on the amendment itself.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded to use a moderator, and the moderator to be the Baker Tilly representative that we've employed. This is a discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Okay, is there anything else we have to do with that? I know that the council was given questions on Friday, or at least I received them on Friday. I'm assuming everybody has gotten those. Do we select the questions then, or is the moderator selecting the questions, or how is that happening?
The city council was requested to identify any questions they specifically thought were more important than others. I think you still have time to respond to Patty Hemmenover's email, so if you want specific ones, those are the ones she would place priority on. I know there's been a few councilmembers who have responded and actually have added additional questions that they thought were important were not addressed in the original list, and so your participation is, to create those, is still available to you, but I believe, you know, Ms. Hemmenover is going to try and get those nailed down, you know, earlier in the morning than later, you know, in the morning. So if you have any issues, please send them to her, and we'll nail those questions down.
Okay. Councilmember Davis.
The times that I was part of interviewing before, we had all the same questions for every applicant. Is it the same way this time? Okay, so there's no different questions as to why someone left a job?
Right. The deviation is probably going to come in is once they answer the original question. If somebody has, you know, like a burning question as a follow-up, that, you know, that might be one of those things we say, okay, I want to know more about that, you know, and maybe reserve that to the end of the official questions. That way, you get through the process, and then they may say, Patty may say, are there any other things that, you know, you may want, you know, you raise your hand, and then you can then ask that. So that would be the odd and unusual question as a follow-up, but keep in mind that there's only like 45 minutes allocated per each applicant, and, you know, given they're an hour spaced apart, there's a little bit of probably time switching over, so and you might have some, a few minutes to even kind of discuss some things and prepare for the next interview. So time goes by really fast when you're in those interviews. It may not be for the person being interviewed, but for the people participating. 45 minutes is not a long time when you're just going through the questions. So I'll have Patty contact everybody and kind of fine-tune that process, you know, either raise your hand and, you know, ask questions immediately, or get through all of the questions that, you know, that you can, and then fine-tune any follow-up questions after that. So I'll make a note of that and pass it on to Patty, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Okay. Are we all set with all that then? So there's nothing else we need to do with that? I haven't been contacted with anything, so. Okay. Next, we have consideration of bids and award project number 2101-A, reconstruction of Second Street Southeast. Mr. Christensen, our public works director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The item in front of you is to consider the adoption of a resolution awarding project number 2101A to Riley Brothers Construction in the amount of $2,099,609.54. The biggest difference in this particular method of approval of projects is this council has typically waited to award the project until after the assessment hearing. The purpose of doing it now is, as you may recall, the assessment hearing is not until June 7th. This awarding, this project and the next item on your agenda allows the contractors to start earlier, order materials earlier, acquire those materials earlier, so that there's a contract in place prior to them doing so. We opened the bid for this particular project on April 5th. This is Second Street Southeast from Mecca to Alina. The low bid for Riley came in at $167,000 and change under the engineer's estimate, and then I've got your budgetary and fiscal issues there on page 176 of 240, and if you're interested on page 179 of your packet are the, is the bid tab for that particular project. We had seven bidders. Mr. Mayor.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding project number 2101-A to Riley Brothers Construction, Inc. in the amount of $2,099,609.54, and authorize signatures on the agreement.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, made by councilmember Osmus, seconded by councilmember Ask. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I asked this question at the meeting, too, and so I think it would be good for the full council to hear, too. We're deviating from the procedure with that. Do we have any exposure from an expense standpoint, or does item number 15 that's, we're going to do, cover us on the question of the financing before the assessment hearing, or approving before the assessment hearing, sorry?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know what was said, I guess.
I think that both Mr. Christensen and Mr. Grammets addressed it at the meeting, so I'm just seeking clarification again.
Okay, someone want to answer the question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, the city attorney was contacted on the question at hand of whether or not both of these hearings need to occur at the same, or both of these actions need to occur at the same time, and they do not. The project is either a go or not go based, you know, on the bids here. The question about assessment is basically who is going to pay for it and how much, and if you apply it by policy, it would be the standard assessment process, therefore, when it gets to the hearing on the assessments, you'll have, you know, more defined numbers that that you can give your citizens and you've got the process that tells them how much they're going to be assessed, you know, per lot or per property. They don't have to be at the same time, no, Wilmer has historically done them at the same time, and I believe at one point if the project, property owners didn't want the project, then it didn't go in, it didn't proceed and you didn't accept the bids. But it's my understanding these projects are needed, street improvements that, plus the second one coming up here. So at this point in time, I would recommend just, you know, continuing on. There's no legal liability and you've got the funding source identified. It's just going through the assessment hearing at a later date.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, do you want to add anything to that? I see that you turned your screen on.
I was a reflex when I heard my name mentioned, but I don't have anything to add to the city administrator's explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next we have consideration of bids and award project 2101B. Again, her city engineer, Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council in front of you. Very similar to the last one, is consider adoption of a resolution awarding project number 2101B. This one is to Dunick in the amount of $1,087,587.90. This is project, this is Eagles Landing East, Eagles Ridge East, rather, from Eighth Street to 37th Avenue Northeast. And in much the same fashion, the low bid in this particular case came in almost $534,000 under the engineer's estimate for a total project of 1.2 million dollars. Mr. Mayor.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding project number 2101-B to Dunick, Inc. in the amount of $1,087,587.90 and authorize signatures on the agreement.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Osmus, seconded by Councilmember Ask to approve the bids and award the project to Dunick's for project number 2101B as in boy. Discussion. Mr. Christensen, I have a question. On this particular project, I had received a number of emails and phone calls in regards to the timing on this particular issue. Have those issues been resolved with the homeowners out there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have had numerous conversations, as most likely you have for on timing. We are trying to tackle them as best we can, although at this point, we're kind of in, on hold until the contractor gives us a schedule. And so we'll have a pre-construction meeting and then at that point, we'll get the schedule from the contractor and take care of those issues as they come up.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have a consideration of emergency ordinance exempting temporary signs from assigned ordinance during local peacetime emergency extension. Dr. Ramstead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Again, staff seek a motion to extend the emergency ordinance for temporary signs as we continue with this COVID-19 emergency.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this emergency ordinance exempting temporary signs from assigned ordinance during local peacetime emergencies. Discussion from council. Councilmember Butterfield.
Could those signs be placed anywhere in Wilmer?
Dr. Ramstead.
They have to be within, they have to be for the business. They can't be placed all over the place. I mean, like, you're talking like.
Well, like FedEx has signs now all over, Grisly's has signs all over.
Right. No, they're supposed to be for the, they're supposed to be for the business and in proximity of the business. They're not supposed to be just spread out all over town.
Well, they are.
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions? Dr. Ramstead, do we have any idea when we're going to stop this?
Well, I wish I had a crystal ball. I think it would be wise to stop it when the COVID-19 restrictions start to taper off. That doesn't seem to be happening anytime soon. Hopefully, but it has been starting to, so hopefully in the next 60 days, we can get rid of this.
I mean, over 60% of our residents that are eligible to be vaccinated are vaccinated.
True.
And I spoke against this last time, and this is all I can do. I can just make my wishes known. I don't think this is a big deal, but I understand that the council wishes to continue with it. I think that it's time to lift some of these emergency ordinances. I think they've been extended too long. I think that people have been governing from a high and not governing at the proper level. And again, I will speak against this motion. So council? Councilmember Davis.
I just want to speak to the signs that are out that aren't in place of the, you know, by the businesses. What can we do about that?
Well, we could patrol and probably remove the signs, but almost like election signs.
Because what's the point of an ordinance if people just put signs everywhere?
Right, well, as long as they're within proximity of their business, it's basically a benefit to these businesses that have had a hardship for a very long time. So we're just continuing it to benefit them for the time being. It's not a restriction, but you're right, with every rule, there's kind of an extension and taking advantage of it. And so I think the only thing we could probably do is go around and collect the signs that are astray.
That'd be a good thing for staff to do.
Yeah.
Councilmember O'Brien.
What exactly did these signs allow them to do or not allow them to do? Does it, did it hamper parking at all? We talked a little bit about that before, but what exactly did these signs do?
They were intended to get the word out that they're open for business.
That's it? Just that they're open for business?
Pretty much.
Aren't all businesses open for business right now?
They are, but they have restrictions on them in terms of occupancy loads and things like that, social distancing.
So when this originally came to the council, I think we were one of the first cities that authorized this type of use, and I fully support when we did that. I mean, I was one of the champions behind it, and I really felt it was important to let people know and because it came from our businesses asking us for it. I'm not hearing the same thing any longer. So again, this is a council decision and I just wanted to make my point made, so I'm ready to vote if everybody else is. Councilmember Osmus.
I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Mayor, as far as, you know, we want to do whatever we can for the businesses, and the intent was that if people knew that they could have drive-through or that they maybe had some specials that they could have for drive-through, but they are all open now, so I'm not exactly sure what it is that we're accomplishing with signage now. But if it is an issue, I would think it would be easier to just call that business that has the signs that are out and they go collect their signs and just explain to them that it has to be in the proximity of their business, but.
Additional, Councilmember Nelson.
I think just as the last time, we were requested to do this to help the businesses, and I think the next one that we're going to do is important also, and I think another 60 days isn't going to make a difference. I think the businesses are planning on this right now, and I support going ahead with it for another 60 days.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Nay.
Five ayes, two nays.
The motion passes. Next, Dr. Ramstead, consideration of emergency ordinance allowing commercial use of public property during local peacetime, I'm sorry. City Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think we had the same vote result last time, or at least the same issue. Because it's an emergency ordinance, the charter requires six votes for the ordinance to pass, so a five-two vote would be insufficient to extend the ordinance. It would not pass.
Well, last time, again, we revoked it last time because I failed to mention it last time and I failed to mention it again this time. I did not receive an email on it today that I saw that I was supposed to do that, so. And that again is my error. I made a mistake, and I think what we talked about under the speak your piece is that when you make a mistake, admit it and then correct the mistake if you can correct it. So with that, I will have a recount, a recall of the question. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Five-two.
That motion fails. Next, we have consideration of emergency ordinance allowing commercial use of public property during local peacetime emergencies. Again, this will take six affirmative votes to pass. Dr. Ramstead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Again, this is an extension of 60 days of a similar ordinance. This time it's for the use of the public right-of-way for businesses that have been struggling with occupancy levels and social distancing inside, indoors. So again, it's a staff recommendation that we extend this for 60 days. I think this is a little different than the sign ordinance, this is a physical use, so I would stand behind this one.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to consider the emergency ordinance allowing commercial use of public property during local peacetime emergencies. Roll call. I'm sorry, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly followed by Osmus.
So this one would be like closing off Pacific or Benson by Fridas like we did the last time if they requested, and Jake's putting tables and stuff out in front and Spurs and.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I just wanted to echo what Dr. Ramstead had said is that this one definitely does help the business owners because they are still limited to seating inside and they need our help with anything that we can do for their business.
Additional discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consideration of introduction of an ordinance authorizing land sale to Lumber One Development Company, LLC instead of public hearing for May 17th. Dr. Ramstead.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we had a, we need to have a resolution for publication by summary of that last ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, was my mistake.
Second.
Motion was made by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to publish by summary the ordinance. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of an introduction of an ordinance authorizing land sale to Lumber One Development, LLC instead of public hearing through May 17th, 2021. Dr. Ramstead.
Mayor, pardon.
Councilmember Nelson.
I would like to abstain from the conversation and the vote. I will remove myself to the back of the room.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers, staff are seeking two motions this evening. The first motion is to introduce the ordinance authorizing a land sale to Lumber One Development and to set a public hearing for May 17th. And the second motion is to publish the ordinance by summary. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to provide an overview. On May 2020, the Wilmer City Council established the Renaissance Zone, a new zoning overlay encompassing the central business district and adjacent areas. The last of the Renaissance Zone incentives were adopted in December of 2020. The new district is a five-year pilot program intended to encourage economic development. This district offers greater flexibility relative to zoning requirements otherwise imposed by the underlying zoning districts and is regulated by Section 12 of the zoning ordinance and defines the geographical boundaries within which development incentives are targeted. Lumber One Development Company would like to acquire from the city of Wilmer, the west half of Block 25 is part of the land needed for their proposed multifamily housing complex fronting US Highway 12 and located in the city's central business district and the newly created Renaissance Zone. The city's property is currently being used as a parking lot that has been observed by staff to be about 60% empty during the peak business hours. The development has already spent, the developer has already spent considerable time and money to perform their due diligence and negotiate purchase agreements with the private property owners on the east half of Block 25. Lumber One is an experienced developer that has constructed successful housing projects in other communities across greater Minnesota, very similar to Wilmer. A PDF of the developer's PowerPoint resume was provided in your packets. The developer is proposing to build a 57-unit apartment complex with an estimated total investment of $10 million. To help defray costs associated with mitigating any environmental issues with a former dry cleaning business that was on the site, any site clearances and preparation, the developer will be requesting a TIF assistance in the future consistent with the Renaissance Zone incentive program. On April 21st, 2021, the Wilmer Planning Commission recommended approving the sale of the city property to Lumber One. This will be the first private project of this size and cost in downtown Wilmer in many decades. If the proposed Renaissance Zone project did not involve a combination of city-owned land and privately-owned land, staff could have waited and presented a full project design at a later date, but the developer must know they have the city-owned land before paying for the private-owned land. Signed purchase agreements between the developer and owners of the neighboring private properties highlights the need to expedite approvals. Also, since the April 21st Planning Commission meeting, the developer has hired an architect and made progress developing their proposal. This is further indication of their commitment to the project and to the city of Wilmer. And so we were able to, at the last minute, include a site plan and rendering of the proposed building in your packets. As a Renaissance Zone incentive to the proposed development of a 57-unit apartment building in downtown Wilmer, the four city-owned parcels comprising the entire west half of Block 25 are proposed to be sold for $1 each to increase workforce housing for local industry, support the downtown economy, provide construction jobs, and to return what is marginally used property to a significantly higher and better use. The total tax assessed value of the Renaissance Zone land incentive to the developer is estimated to be around $91,700. Currently tax-exempt, if taxed, the west half of Block 25, well, currently tax-exempt, if it was taxed, the west half of Block 25 would generate about $2,000 in taxes. After the $10 million investment and after the expiration of any TIF, the developed block is estimated to generate $50,000 in annual tax revenue, a 25-fold increase that will repay Wilmer taxpayers for the Renaissance Zone land incentive in just two years. repay Wilmer taxpayers for the Renaissance Zone land incentive in just two years. Only about 19 of the 48 parking spaces on the city-owned parking lot are used at the heights of each business day, as surveyed by our staff at 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. each business day. We are continuing that survey through to the public meeting. Also, within your packet are five pages from the 2013 Downtown Wilmer Parking Study, showing that the total number of parking spaces and the usage for both off-street and on-street parking. The study concluded that downtown parking, though it varies in different parts of downtown, on average, is only about 54% utilized, something that we've discovered when we tried to take photographs of the site. It looks much fuller when you shoot a photograph than if you look down from an aerial and do a count. It's rather deceiving. Again, the private and public land sales are contingent on one another and time-sensitive for the following four reasons. The project is contingent on acquiring both halves of Block 25, so they need to know that the city-owned land is theirs before paying for the privately-owned land. Second, the developer is spending time and funds performing its due diligence and project design with an architect. Third, the developer has only a 60-day window to move forward with their private land purchases. And finally, the developer is planning to invest $10 million in the Wilmer Downtown Renaissance Zone and intends to start construction at their earliest convenience. They're doing this, number one, so they can do it while the weather is good, and number two, as you know with many of our own projects, they want to beat the cost increases that are just on the horizon. Tonight, we have Mr. Aaron Bachman, Executive Director of the Economic Development Commission, and the developer Ted Schmidt is on the line. So Aaron, would you like to add a few words?
Mr. Bachman. Yes, thank you very much. I really appreciate that, Dave. Good evening. My name is Aaron Bachman, Executive Director of the EDC. I encourage the city council to set the public hearing for the sale of a city parking lot that will enable Lumber One Development Company to redevelop Block 25 in downtown Wilmer. This project represents both the culmination and the commencement. I would like to recognize the efforts of several people in this regard. First, Dave. Dave Ramstead. Over the past year and a half, he has had the consistent vision to create a Renaissance Zone, or ARZ, encompassing Wilmer's central business district and adjacent neighborhoods. The Planning Commission and ultimately the Wilmer City Council also need to be recognized. In 2020, you showed leadership in creating the five-year pilot program designed to provide local incentives to encourage investment in the downtown. Today is also a new beginning. This is the first major ARZ project for Wilmer. This project represents the largest single investment, I believe, in the downtown since the 2002 Rice Hospital expansion. I would also like to recognize Ted Schmidt of Lumber One. As the developer, Ted has had the vision regarding a multifamily housing investment in the ARZ. I have been impressed with his efforts to make this a reality. Early on, Ted connected with city and EDC staff. He has negotiated purchase agreements with the private landowners on the east half of the block. He has signed an LOI, Letter of Intent. He is working with the architectural firm JALG. He is doing his due diligence. Lumber One is an experienced developer, as was mentioned before, that has successfully completed 38 multifamily projects involving over 2,000 units in the past 12 years in Minnesota. Only six of those were in the seven-county Twin Cities metro area. Lumber One has significant experience in developing projects in greater Minnesota, including in places such as St. Joseph, Sauk Rapids, Austin, Buffalo, Owatonna, St. Peter, Red Wing, and is currently actually working on a project in Zambroda. Housing availability is really tight in Wilmer. I hear about it all the time. The county has a whopping 72 single-family home units that are for sale out of a population of 43,000. And if you look at the, a graph that I have here, this is how that availability has gone down in several decades. It is low. We need all types of housing. The units at Block 25 lofts are primarily market-rate apartments. They are not intended for large households or families. These are intended for young professionals, smaller households, folks seeking downtown living and walkability. Block 25 lofts will offer several amenities that are not available currently in downtown Wilmer, including enclosed parking, a roof patio, some green space, et cetera. In terms of parking, Block 25 lofts will require the, will provide the necessary parking for tenants on-site and will exceed what is required in the CBD. Block 25 is not in the core area of the CBD from a parking standpoint. It's on the edge, but it's an important element because it's the entrance to the downtown. And with that, I would like to introduce Ted Schmidt from Lumber One. Ted.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. Hi, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having us. We are really excited with this project. We've done quite a bit of market study, myself and Andy Martin from Granite City Real Estate. There is a real need, and I think there's a real need for households that are wanting to come in, the startup households, and they're not looking for three bedrooms or a yard or things like that. They're wanting to be close to work, easy accessibility, and those items. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in our community. Mr. Rams, Dr. Ramstead.
I'll entertain any questions for myself or for Mr. Bachman.
So tonight, what we're looking for is setting a public hearing for May 17th. It's a simple motion, but if council has questions, feel free to address either Mr. Bachman or Dr. Ramstead or Mr. Schmidt.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for May 17th.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to set the public hearing for May 17th, 2021. Councilmember Osk.
You mentioned before that there is, the developer would be looking for the typical TIF. Can you remind me, what's the, like, how long does that run? How, when would that expire?
It can go anywhere from 10 to 25 years. The process right now is to secure the land, and then they will pursue a conditional use permit to approve their design, and then after that, they will apply for the TIF. So we have a couple more steps after this. But the TIF is necessary for this particular deal as it, as we know ourselves from our initial try to put the city hall there, that the land did cost a significant amount of money, and what is only making this project feasible is our incentives for the Renaissance Zone.
Thank you.
Just no comments or questions. Councilmember Fagerly followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Ramstead, if they are unable to purchase the other two lots, the private lots, this deal is null and void.
That's correct. They have a purchase agreement, though, for both lots right now, and they're within their window of the purchase agreement. So if this is approved at the next meeting, they have the rights to those two lots.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I just wanted to say that this is exciting, and it's, kudos for all the work that you've done to make the Renaissance Zone, and this is exactly how, you know, we hoped it would play out. So hope for the success of this, this project, because it's a, it's just a fabulous addition to the downtown.
Thank you.
Just no comments.
On behalf of the mayor's office, I want to echo what Councilmember Osmus just said. When you had started here, you and I had a conversation in your office, and you'll remember that.
Yep.
And I said that we really need to do something with our downtown, and I shared with you a couple examples on things that I had saw and a project you actually worked on in downtown St. Paul. I didn't realize that was one of your projects when I was talking to you about it, and then afterward, you said, "Mr. Mayor, that's a project that I worked on."
Right.
And so I'm very excited that Lumber One is looking at investing in our downtown, investing in our community. I think Mr. Bachman really addressed the housing issue very clearly. I've been trying to find a home in Wilmer for the last two weeks and have put a few bids in and have ended up unsuccessful, so I know that housing market is very hot. A friend of mine listed his house on Friday, accepted an offer last night, and so the housing market in Wilmer is on fire, and that's good. And because the question is always, what comes first, the jobs or the housing? And I've always said you have to have a place before you can, before you can start looking for a job, you have to have a place to live, although we know statistically, a lot of people come to Wilmer and drive to Wilmer to work. So this is a tremendous project. Mr. Schmidt, I'm really pleased to see you at the table bringing this to us, and I fully support this moving forward. So with that, I think we're ready to vote. Councilmember O'Brien.
Some of the complaints I hear about, about trying to find apartments in Wilmer area is that for small family, like you're talking about, or a single person, the noise factor. And I would like to know, when you're talking about small family, single people, are we talking about apartments where you could bring in a small family, where won't be a lot of noise would be an issue? Because I've heard a lot about that here in this community. They cannot find apartments that don't have a noise issue.
Right. That is actually a very common issue with apartment buildings, because unlike single-family homes, they're sort of antithetical. They like to be in very busy, visible areas. That helps to maintain their, their low vacancy and high occupancy. So noise is typically a challenge with multifamily housing. Obviously, Ted is going to have to do his homework and figure out what the noise decibels there are and determine whether or not they need to do any noise mitigation, but there are a lot of strategies for doing that with extra-thick walls, insulation, isolating panels, and, you know, triple-pane glass. There's a, there's a whole variety of technologies that are at Ted's disposal, the developer's disposal, excuse me.
Just no comments or questions. We're ready to vote.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson. Well, that's right, sorry. Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That motion passes. Next, for publication by summary.
Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to public, for publication by summary of the proposed ordinance. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson abstaining. And Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That motion passes as well. Next, we have consideration of adoption of resolution of intent to reimburse for 2021 improvements. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As alluded to earlier in your meeting, this item is to consider adoption of a resolution of intent to reimburse for costs incurred on our 2021 street and other improvement projects. The four projects on this list include the Federal Path Project, which actually were, bids were opened on July 15th of 2020. We opened two projects on April 5th of this year, and we opened the final of these four projects on April 26th of this year. The streets are listed there, Second Street, Eagle Ridge Drive, the ones we talked about earlier, First Street South, and the Federal Path that goes along Highway 12 and Lakeland Drive. This is a state statute requirement to, and prior to incurring any cost on these projects, council needs to adopt a resolution of an intent to reimburse, to ensure the city will be refunded for the costs of these projects.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make that motion to adopt a resolution of intent to reimburse for the costs incurred on the 2021 street and other improvement projects. Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Osmus, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Six ayes or seven ayes?
Oh, sorry, seven.
Seven ayes.
Zero nays.
Zero nays. That motion passes. Okay, I did not have anything sent to me for the good comments, but Councilmember Fagerly, do you have something you want to add?
I have a question for Clerk Thompson. Is the city auction coming? Is that this Wednesday or is it next week?
Yes, the city auction is this Wednesday, May 5th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and it's at the Public Works Garage, or Public Works Lot.
Okay, thank you. And I've got one other thing. Is Sean still there? Or did he leave?
Yep, he's there, on my screen anyways.
Yes, yeah. Driving out here, I see by where the new pickleball courts are. They're doing something there. Is that going to be a plaza or is that more parking? Any idea?
Well, that's, sorry, Mr. Fagerly, that's actually new playground equipment that's going in at, for Sperryville Park.
Okay. We were debating Julie and me, so she won.
I, I was right. Just say it.
So this evening, the mayor made a mistake, and Councilmember Osmus was right. So I'm not sure that what that says about the rest of you, but I think you're somewhere in the middle. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.